So, which service do you use to identify celebrities in videos?
This service will be used to identify, okay.
As to way in video and in picture, so which, which one do you use to identify celebrities in the, in videos?
It was a video API, I mean, a, a, a video handler is just a second. And, yes, yes, yes.
Remember the name.
Video indexer.
Good job. And which one would you use to identify celebrities in the pictures?
Yeah, the pictures, I mean, face, if, face API.
Good job. Can you name another one? There's another one.
Um, computer vision.
Good job. Yes. So let's see the answer down here.
Uh, this API, do you?
Oh, computer vision, we use analyze image by domain stream and the domain you select will be celebrities. And the computer interface and also video indexer. So you did a good job there.
Thank you so much.
Remember the vision service now, so you would have, have any issue with it in the test. So, it's okay, this one, which API do you use to read heavy text document up to 200 pages, 2000 pages? So yesterday only say about the limits of 200, 200 pages. But today I have a look and there's another way to read 2000 pages of text documents. So I didn't say that yesterday. So can you guess which one?
Um, it is, it's read. So, um, actually, I would go for read API, but.
How did you?
Um. OCR, OCR, OCR.
Um, yes, OCR.
But, but, but I have a question. Is there any difference between OCR and read API?
Uh, yes, I actually have that in my quiz here. I'll show you. There's a bit different in, so I remember read API is the older version of OCR. And there's, there is a difference. I remember I did a quiz on that.
Actually, I believe that OCR itself has a read API.
Oh, I said it, older model.
Okay, OCR is an old.
Yes, so the difference is OCR is the older model. So it support more languages.
Okay, so why, I mean, people created read API when there was a model which can read more languages like OCR?
Ah, let me see, yeah, it's Microsoft. When the days old exam is still working, but I think I read in one of the document. They say with API, there is, they can process streaming data. Let me, let me revise on that. I don't know.
Um, Jane, you have to go up at the read API section.
Mm hmm, yes.
Yes, yes, here, here it was written up to 2000 pages, how OCR works.
Mm hmm, yes, but I don't know why they create the new read API when they, they have the OCR API. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Basically, basically, what I think that, I mean, OCR is a character recognition. Now character doesn't means any language. Character means, I mean, let's say.
I, I felt, so basically the read API, they execute asynchronously. And the OCR, they execute asynchronously.
Oh, now that was very great.
Uh, okay, let me the project to just be sure. Something with synchronize and asynchronous. So did you register for the test yet?
Um, I'll register today. Actually, I mean, the project I'm associated with the bank is going to end up in, on 31st of July. So, I mean, then I'll be free from bank so that I can fully commit it, then I can fully commit my time on this exam so that I'm going to register today. And schedule my exam for, let's say, a week or more than a week later. So that I can give myself enough time to prepare for it.
Hmm, oh, but then the exam go, the last day to take the exam, but this scale will be on the seventh.
Okay, and on the seventh, so it means that I have enough time to register right now, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, yes, I'm really sorry that I interrupted you. Yes, please say what you were saying.
Oh, I'm just looking for the document, so don't worry. So.
Okay, now, Jane, I want to ask you one suggestion. Can you please give me one suggestion, a friendly suggestion?
Oh, sorry, can you say it again?
Uh, Jane, uh, as a friend, can you suggest me one thing?
Okay.
Uh, Jane, I am, I'm a lift scholar, right? I have been awarded Linux Foundation Scholarship. Right now, what I was thinking that I should take Kubernetes application development, certified Kubernetes application developer certification, C-CAD. Have you heard about Kubernetes?
Yes, I have heard of it.
Yes, so, uh, which Linux certification would you recommend? If someone is into operations side, I mean, like, first of all, which Linux certification will you recommend that will be the best for considering the upcoming trends?
Oh, you, you meant Linux, Linux certification?
Yes, Linux Foundation certification.
Oh, hang on, I, I see the chat, let me, let me see. Oh, there's five participants.
The, the.
Oh, we, we had no idea. Sorry, guys. We were chatting, we were chatting because before we didn't see anyone.
Okay, Jane, we'll talk later on. You just continue.
Oh, hang on, I, I lost, I don't see the chat.
Yes, because you are recording, you have to close the recording to see the chat.
Oh, okay, I see the recording now. I see the chat now. Yes, we are, we're gonna have the technical session. That's what he was doing, a saga, because we didn't see anyone. So I thought no one coming. So back to your question, Ali, for just a little bit. So I'm not sure about Linux certification because I myself get any, so, yes, I have no idea on that, sorry.
Okay, no problem, no problem at all.
But let me know, I would be interested into, I, as I said, I'm, I'm looking to have more certification. So, um, hello, guys, hello, Ankeeta, Prasata and Saga, welcome to the session. We just doing the quizzes because we were waiting for everyone. So, are you guys all right? We can continue the quizzes from now. Oh. Yeah. Okay, I, I cannot say, I cannot see that yet. Okay, okay, hi, okay. So let's continue. So I was telling, I was talking to Ali about the difference between the OCR API and also read API. So I have found, oh, that I looked into. So here, OCR API is the older recognition model and it supports only images and is executed asynchronously. That mean like when you point a camera, they process the data and then they return to you the, the picture. But I mean, the word, the text in there and the newer model. So the, the read API is a text heavy documents up to 2000 pages. That's why it executes asynchronously. So those are the different, those are the different, difference between the read API. So read API, they support the heavy text documents, they go above 2000, 200 pages. And that's why they, they do, they process them asynchronously. So let me see. Let me see from the yesterday. Can you guys hear me clear? So, remember that we was talking about form recognizer, right? It's only recognize 200 first pages. So if you want to go above 200 pages for form, then you should use read API. Read API is the feature that's in the computer vision. So remember the difference, the key difference between OCR API and Greek API is that the one OCR is older, is support synchronously and it return immediate, immediate result in Greek text and it support more language than read API. Okay, guys, so let's continue.
So it means that my answer was right, read API.
Yes, yes, we're correct. Yeah, I was just wonder how you get the answer because I didn't mention about this yesterday. So.
Um, basically, I focus on the keyword read. So that's why.
Yes, that's, that's a good idea. So whenever you, you cannot guess the API normally, Azure name is very close to the function of their service. So whenever you cannot guess guys, you can try the word board before that. That's a smart strategy, actually.
Yeah.
Which of the vision service that give you customized options.
Custom vision.
Yes, also, yeah, that's good. And what else can you can customize? So remember, vision service are these services.
Um, um, uh, Jane, can you repeat what you said?
Oh, our vision services add this group of services. So within this group, which one you can customize? So you said, which is correct. And there's another one.
Um, there's another one.
Yes. So let me help you out, is video indexer, it come with the ability to customize as well. So.
Um.
Oh, sorry, form recognizer, you can custom model and video indexer. You can customize some of the feature to adopt to your use such as like custom brand language and person.
Okay. So. Index and customization.
Yes, so these three you can have some customization. Okay, so if the face is not groupable, this is also the one pattern I didn't mention yesterday. I went back and I, we read the document. So if a face, so in the face service in here. So see, there's a face service. So in there, if you have like a group of image with a lot of different faces and some images, the face on there is not groupable. So do you know like what is the, what is the return out, return output of that?
Uh, there was, if a group, there, there, there's two or more required people in an image. And if this, and if this is not groupable and group it there for face recognition.
Mm hmm. So like, you know, like Facebook, they have the feature that they, they recognize your face through different pictures. So each pictures, you look difference, but they still able to group all these pictures and come out to the conclusion that is you. You know, so if, if you, if you're facing out a group of all, so the output of that will be messy group. So if, if your picture return to messy group a gray, which is, that mean it contain face ID, that is no similar to the one that found.
Uh, okay, group.
It's just a return. So it's just a way, messy group is the term that it return for faces that is found with no similarities to others. Okay. Yes, okay. So let's move to the new part today. So the new part today is natural language processing. And that this group is overlap with a lot of other services in Azure, such, such as speech and text.
Um, this, Jane, sorry to disturb you. Saga, Saga is asking for yesterday's link.
Oh, yesterday link is this one, actually, I, I think I sent it.
Yes, yes, it, it, maybe he's asking about the recording.
Oh, that's, that is the pet, pet. I, I stopped the recording for some reason. So I only have like the last 24 minutes where we do the quizzes and stuff. So if you want that, I can post it on YouTube. I don't think it will help us a lot. So we'll, yeah, we will try to do more quizzes today. So you can revise the, the information of yesterday. I think we have enough time as, for the today, I will only present the language understanding and text analysis because the Q and A Mac maker and translator is belong to the, belong to the speech API, speech services. So that's why that is the part where, and, and is the girl who was prepared a slide with me. So those part will be her part in that section. So it will come to last week. So basically today I will just present this modern language understanding and text analysis. And if we have some extra time, we will go to some features in Azure machine learning algorithm. Basically, I just want to show you guys the G-C and how Azure recommend us to select the algorithm. So let's start with that. Is everyone all right?
Yes, yes.
So. So let's start with the language understanding. So their short name is Luis. I, I don't know what is started for, but in the document, it just language understanding and they open the bracket, it said it, Luis. So basically, they will take the input of the user conversation now. So they either take the speech or the text input and they will predict the overall meaning. Then they will put out relevant information and they will return the output first. So in order to use this, you don't need to be a machine learning expert, but then you need to be familiar with natural language processing concept. Oh, one thing I forgot to tell you guys, I found this slide, which is fantastic for us, for the exam. Because in the exam, well, from the last exams that I participated, there will be like case studies and scenarios for you to pick the services that are suitable. So in here, it break down to three tier, easy to use, medium to use and need expert level to use. So easy to use, like any developer, you have basic knowledge of machine learning and you don't need like tons of coding and you can use it. Medium to difficult. So Azure Machine Learning Studio and learning visual experience is a drag and drop features. And not much of coding, but more like you choose the, you choose on the interface which, which state you want to process. In the export to you. So this could be like heavy on coding and data transformation and apply different services to be able to run. So please remember this slide so that we, so that in the exam, you will be able to pick the one that suit to the scenario. So again, anyone, yes?
Um, sorry to interrupt you. And the full form of Luis's language understanding intelligent service.
Mm hmm, yes. So these, these belong to the easy to use.
Um, Jane, have you tried out Azure ML Studio and Azure ML Visual Experience yourself?
Uh, I just, I just try out the Azure Machine Learning Studio Designer. So it basically like a drag and drop tool and then user interface, you know, they're not much of like coding itself.
Hmm.
Yes, I think in our class, they're also, they're also, they're, they're also labs that use Azure Machine Learning Studio. But then I have difficulties with the lab. So I haven't tried much from our UDA City class lab. I think people was having difficult to access the lab as well.
Yes, I mean, that's why I sign up for machine, for Azure myself, I mean, independently, irrespective of the class.
Yes. So guys, if you have the dot edu email, you can get like $200 free for the service. I think for the first few months and then after that they will switch for like 12 months free tier for everyone. So you, if you have edu email, you can use that. Order twice, there is a free lab on the Microsoft Learn that you can use and they will create a sandbox for you to test out their service. That is, is very important because you, even though that, oh, sorry. Oh, you can try it here too. So you can try the drag and drop. It's a classic studio. So you can try it here or you can go to. For example, I'm sure this, you can return. No, this is not return. Okay, so there's a quicker way to access it. It's true on my link. So if you click in any of the quiz link, it will take you to the learning site and you go back a little bit, yeah, exercise. So this exercise, they will actually give you a sandbox to set this at the lab. See, so let me take you. Exercise. Yes, you see, so you sign into your account and then you can start trying to code and stuff in here. They will create a sandbox for you for free. So that's also another option to try out their services.
Awesome, awesome.
So the only requirement is you have the Azure subscription and you can be like free subscription. As long as you don't, you, as long as you delete all of the resources, I think it will be free for you. So remember, delete the services after you've used them, you will be all right. So, yes, so let back to our slide. So basically, you, you need to familiar with NLP concepts to be able to utilize a language understanding and I will go to NLP concept in the later slide. But you can also access the NLP concept here. Yes, so basically, you know, tokenize speech segmentation, stuff like that, you need to go through it and have the refreshing memories on that before the test. Uh, so Louis, it come with rebuilt model and also custom model. And the best practice to use it here, I didn't include in the slide because quite a lot, they like few pages of it. So also you need to go through this to be able to, to be able to successfully this model. But basically, a few things that I can tell you right now. So let me tell you after I go through what it is first. Then you will understand more. So basically, the three key aspects of Luis is utterance, intent and entities. So let's see what it does. So this is the site of Microsoft Learn and it's fantastic for reading, summarize. It doesn't have much information, but summarizes is really good. So these are the three key aspects of Luis, Luis to understanding language. So utterance is the input. So instead of calling it, put a code, utterance. So once you have a sentence, it's in the utterance. So you can see here. Book two ticket flight for New York Eve. So this is, this sentence is the utterance. And when we, when we evaluate for the, for the key aspect, we call it intent, intent is inter, intent present the task or action that they want to do. So if purpose or the goal expressed in the user utterance, so the goal here, let's see that, can anyone guess for me, what is the goal here? Here, we can, we can see the intent in here. So let me, let, let me say the last one to entities. Entities, you present the word or the phrase inside the utterance that you want to extract. So we have, we have two feature. So in a sentence, we have entities, which is the key word or phrase that you want to extract. The end of intent is the goal of the sentence. So for example, sample book two ticket of flight to New York on New York Eve. So the intent, we can say that the intent, it booked flight, you see. This is the intent, like we want to book a ticket. And the key phrase and key phrase that help us is New York, which is the location. And New Year is, is the event. Is everyone all right with this?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Yes, or Prasata, Saga, are you all right?
Uh, let me handle the chat.
Oh, okay.
No one has raised any question yet. Yes.
Okay, awesome. So let's take a few minutes so that we go through the exercise to make sure that we have, we understand this because it's the three major of the, of the service and we need to understand how to use it. Okay. So let's say, book a flight to Seattle. So which one is, so of course, like all of these three is utterance. I, I don't know how to pronounce it correctly, but I guess it will now you do this. So can you guys guess for me the intent, the entities and the entities of the first sentence?
Um, the intent is of course book of light.
Okay. And entities?
Entities are Seattle.
Yes.
Entity is a Seattle.
Yes, that's correct. And when does the store open? So what is the intent of?
Um, what is the intent of, I mean, this, this, okay, Saga said open.
Yes, that could be, let me, let me open the document so that we make sure we can compare it to the document.
Okay, and Saga said entities start.
Good job. Yeah, the entity is also time. So let me, yes. Oh, so the extent, you guys both write the star hour and location. Yep. So the intent here is we want to find a store hour and the location and the next extract data will be the open. So let's go to the last sentence. This one is what I make up. So schedule a study group on PM with Jane on Zoom. So what is the intention here?
Uh, scheduling.
Mm hmm.
Schedule, Saga, Saga said, schedule. So basically, the intention is to schedule with something like a study group. Like in the earlier one, it was book of life. So in this network, it should be scheduled as a study group will be the intention.
Mm hmm.
And the, and the, thank you. And, and the entities will be Jane and Zoom.
Mm hmm. Let's see, I come up with an example that closer here. So you're right. So the intent here is schedule meeting and the extract the data is Zoom and 1pm, well, 1pm involved. I guess they didn't recognize the extract there, but I think depends on our purpose. We can customize it because we have the custom model view it. But if the extract later, in the example would be the time and the person.
Okay, I mean, what I'm understanding that basically Luis, treat Luis. Okay, I mean, what I'm understanding that basically Luis, treat Luis is just like Cortina or Alexa. If you treat it, so for Cortina or Alexa, it's not important that for which person you are talking about. It's the, it's like a personal assistant, personal assistant doesn't count which person you are going to meet also. His job is to understand at which time, at which place.
Mm hmm.
And if you look at the extracted data, you will find that these are the two things that this, that the Luis is more interested in. Seattle is a person. I mean, open means whether the place is, let's say, whether the place is open or not and 1 PM and Zoom. Zoom is a place, I mean, virtual place, but Zoom is a place and 1 PM is the time at which time on which place.
Mm hmm.
These are the two most important questions.
Mm hmm. I guess so. I guess the extract data, we can expand it much more depends on the our training model. So, so here is the, we will go through a little bit about the query that if we turn, so you can see like inquiry, they always include the original content. And then they will, they will come up with the intent and then they will come to the score. And the score will range from zero to one and you know, zero is the worst and one is the more likely. So let me see. Yes. So one is definitely match and zero is definitely a value, failure. So we have trained the low confidence and the high confidence. So, yes.
Yes, as you, you are seeing, you are saying correctly, basically, these are probabilities. So one means hundred percent and zero means nothing.
Mm hmm. Yes, yes, that's correct. So remember that the return is will include a score of zero and one only. This is one of the feature of it. So there's some best practice that recommend in here. And you can go through the list. It's very long. I don't, I cannot guess which one they will test here. But my best get to go ask you things about like endpoint and like how many, how many examples you should give it to Luis to train and to learn, you know, so you can focus on that, you know, and
And Jane, I have a question. Can we, is there any pre-trained Louis model that we can use?
Yes.
I mean, so that we don't have to train it ourselves and we can just implement, we can just embed it in our API.
Oh, I have, well, yes, sorry for the confusion. So in all the models, in all the models, there will be a training and training and result, right? So like in the rebuild, in the custom, they will, they go through the training and they go through the, they go giving back for you the result. So what is the difference between the one that you customize and the one that rebuilds? So rebuild, it take the result of it take the result of others data that they already train. So you know, like back to the, to our IoT class, you know, even with the pre-rebuild models from from open, from open, we know, right, we have the set of data that already rebuilt for us, like cat and dog, something like that. Do you remember example, right?
Hmm.
We still have to train the model to come out to the results, but then we don't have to to train the model to recognize the cat anymore because the cat is already there. We just train the model to recognize the cat in our picture. We don't have to teach the machine, what is the cat anymore.
Exactly, right.
Yes. So in the, it is the same with the concept in here, the rebuilt model. You don't have to train, you don't have to train the machine to recognize the handwriting anymore because it's already know what the handwriting is. It just basically it recognize your handwriting.
Okay, okay.
Yes, but then, yes, but then maybe like the thing about customized model is that like, for example, it only recognize, it only recognize Latin alphabets. It doesn't recognize Chinese character. So you have to customize it to understand the Chinese character. So that is the process where you have to do, it depends whether you can use like cognitive service to have like digital customized. Or like you have to use like full customization with Azure Machine Learning.
Hmm.
Yes. But then basically, all of the service, it has to go through the training and the result. Because the training is to train with your data to make sure that whatever it learns before it fits with your data.
Okay, so the customized models are that data will be your and the model will be of the service, but in a pre-built, the model will be yours as well as the data will be yours, right?
Mm hmm. So let me write it down. So you know, so there's a true service in cognitive rebuild model and customize. So both of these, they will go through training and the result, right, both of them. So both of them go through the training and result, but what is the difference? He here is training, you know, to recognize. So you don't have to, so you don't have to retrain it to recognize what is the cat and dog anymore. It just recognize your dog, you know. So it's already know what a dog is. It just need to recognize the dog that you provided in the picture versus in here. You have to train. So you have to make it to learn like what is the dog again? So that it know what is the dog and then it can apply like it can see the picture and like, oh, it's your dog. So that is one example of computer vision for like rebuild or customize.
Okay, so in a customizable model, it already knows that I, my job is to recognize dog versus cat. But when you will train, it will recognize that this particular dog belongs to the user, right?
Mm hmm. Oh, it recognize the dog in your picture, for example. So in customize, it has, it will have no idea what is the dog is. So you have to teach it to learn what is the dog. And then the next step is to recognize the dog that you provide in the picture.
Okay, I, I will go for a preview.
Yeah, yeah, of course, it is the easiest one. So in common items like dog, cat, landscape, you know, celebrities, then definitely go to rebuild because it's already turned on like millions of data already. So they, they know what is, for example, they know what is Paris Hilton is, you know. They already know, you don't have to teach it, what is Paris Hilton anymore. So they, they know what Paris Hilton look like. So you just input your image. They will train on it that they will know like to detect Paris Hilton in there.
Awesome, awesome.
So that is the meaning of, yes, those and those pre-models already customized also. Those are already in the, the, you want to use.
Um, Prasanta. Um, Prasanta, first of all, thank you so much for coming up. Um, your mic is having you know, your mic is having some trouble. If you read just your mic, please share your insights with us. That will be very helpful for all of us. Jane, am I right?
Yeah, I, I think there's some distortion in voice. Or maybe can you check it out? It would be easier.
Hmm. If you unplug and plug back your mic, maybe the problem will get resolved, Prasanta. Let me handle the chat.
Okay. Sure. So so for Luis is, so you can apply it in an app, you can have a portal and you can or you can build it in such an app and you can pull API for that. So the strength of Luis is that it can integrate in any product, service or framework, you know. So these are the three main areas that you can apply Luis in your production. So it had rebuilt model, it said customized model and you can apply, you can bring it to your product, service and framework as long as it have HTTP request. So one of the feature is the web bot, which is in here. Can, I hope you can can see it. You and I make, so you see basically a bot and and I will present it next week. So basically, you can, you can create web bot with it and you can use tool, these tool to facilitate and help make your bot service better. And other cognitive service that use Luis in Q and A speech service, conversation learner. Those topics will be presented next week. Remember, Luis is the, Luis is the standalone service that you can integrate it in product, service or framework. So and you can call API and you can access it through the portal. So there's a two mode to access Luis.
Okay, Jane, I have a question. Let's say, let's say we are building an IoT device like Alexa. So can we use Luis in Alexa, just like Alexa is working right now? I mean, using connecting with an internet and asking real time questions?
Yes, as long as it have the function to HTTP request, then we will be able to use Luis service.
Okay, and kindly, and kindly tell me again, what is the definition of address? I mean, how can we identify address? It's, I'm sorry that I'm not getting address.
Oh, sorry. Can you repeat again how you identify?
Address, yes. How to identify address?
Info.
Like I understood how to identify the entity and the data, but how to identify the address that?
Oh, okay. Utterance is the input. So you know, like this is, this whole thing is utterance, book of flight to Seattle. So this, the whole thing is utterance. So basically, it's just a input.
Okay, okay.
So utterance is input and you have the intent, which is your intention when you say the sentence and entities in the keyword.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So definitely remember these three and you know, I think the good practice is that you, when you home, then when you are at home and you try to like take any sentence and you try to and to see like which one is the intention of the sentence and which one is the keyword, then I think you can understand this part all right. It's, it's a very strange, strange word to use. So it's very difficult to remember. So I think if you guys do that, then it will help you facilitate these three concepts.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to see you.
You're welcome. So to refresh the NLP concepts, please go through these three code. Um, there's a learning resource on Udacity that they talk about tokenizers, stemming and lemmingization, as long as there's a lab that run it. I'm not sure if it's free anymore because I tried during the three months. So I'll show you anyway, but I think if in case it not free, you guys can try to find videos on YouTube or on the other platform. So, oh.
Jane, have you completed your AWS?
Uh, no, actually, no, I haven't. I still have a few days. So I'll
31st July is the last day.
Today is the last day?
Yes, yes, 31st July is the last day and you have to not only complete it, but also have to attempt a quiz.
Yes, I thought it's 31st is the last day. No? Really? Okay, I have to be hurried. I thought, I thought like 31st the whole time. Okay, yeah. It's very bad of me. Okay, so um yes, please go through these, these keywords so that you know, you know, concept of NLP. Basically, tokenize is where you speak text into word or phrases. So let me quickly show you some example in the you know, this concept is very fast to learn, but then you will forget it. So you need to revise it. So tokenize, basically token is something small, right? So tokenize, you break in now words into a different different, different word like this. So this example, you break it out, this is example. So that's so when you have a tokenized sentence like that, you can see that there was that does that not necessary to use and what that like in multiple form. So what you will do, you will start to analyze it, you start to break it down and put it in it to the original form. And that's where we come to stimulate stemming and lemmingization. So you know, like word for like running and grand, that can map to run. So basically, if it take the word and it take it back to the original root. Is everyone all right? This is a very new concept. So so basically you see study, studying, or get to study. And gen, 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 they all get to change. So stemming and lemmingization, so something stemming. You like you cut the word into the original form and lemmingization is you, you put all the, all the word back to its original form. Entity extraction. Identify the subject in the text. So we, we did some of that in here. So you know entities. So those are entities extraction. Speech detection, you know, like detect word now, participle, sentence boundaries detection. So these detect the sentence within the paragraph of text and stop word removal. So in English, we have like stop word like a, that doesn't add the meaning to the sentence. So that's why we have the method to remove it, to get the core meaning. So basically, please go through these concepts. I also provide a link. So you can go through it here to understand the concept of NLP in Azure Service. What it apply to any other service too, but for the natural language processing model, I think you need to remember these keywords. Okay, so we come to the limitation of the Luis Microsoft Cognitive Service in here. So basically, as you can see, Microsoft Cognitive Service, they won't, they won't have features to return to low level language processing like they won't show you how they tokenize lemonized sentences. But they will show you the high level language. So you know, they will show you a topic detection, sentiment analysis, language detection. These are low level language because these are the part of NLP. So after you take tokenizers, stemming lemon, lemon teaser. So you have to do something with it to be able to to go to the end product to deliver to users. So those so the process, Microsoft Cognitive Service won't support and won't show us. But they only saw us like the end result. So like the end, the end result of their detection for language, like how they recognize it to be Chinese or French or Japanese, they won't tell us. They won't tell us the process and they analyze it, but just the result and result of it. Is everyone all right? Hello, hello? Did I lost someone?
Yes.
Is it? You guys all right? Okay, that's good. Oh, I think Ellie just left. Okay, that's all right. So that's the limitation of cognitive service and also we will have the limitation of container service. So remember, when I say Luis, we can apply to product, service and framework. So basically, you know, we can apply to container service to, to Jiko container when there's an action. So. Okay, I don't know why this link doesn't open. Oh, okay, it's over here. So basically, Luis container support it. The the limitation come with the language. So some language it doesn't support. So I think that's the all you need to remember. At least they would go through and ask like which language they they don't support and which which they support. But just remember, there's a limitation in the support for a support language for the container. So, okay, we go we'll go through text analysis. So which is this model, detect sentiment key phrases, name entities. So the usage is you deserve it to analyze text document, you know, extract key phrase. You take entities set up like place, date, people. Remember, we have this concept here, entities. Where is it entities? You will see it over and over again. Remember that's entities in place. People and time and what else? Date. So remember these three keywords for entity, place, date, people. Okay, and evaluate sentiment, how positive or negative document is. So you can go through the workload and please remember this slide is very, very important. So that's why I highlighted. Because for sure, if you have question about text analysis, they will ask you for the workload and the usage. It's actually mentioned in the exam. So for sure, if you have you have this question, likely they will ask for the workload. Because it a part of the exam. So you know, there's some example scenario for text analysis. So like you can analyze survey. You can analyze inbound customer calls, you can process categorize and support incident. So you know, you support requests submit in unstructured text format and from that you extract phrase and you and. You categorize it into request. So for example, you know, if you write a review or the complaint on the website. So basically, they will take that complaint in unstructured text format, right? They will extract phrase, they will extract entities. Remember what is entities, guys? Body entities. Can someone we. Can someone tell me what is entities again? This is very important and I think everyone should try to remember is. Presser Sega.
Yeah, 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 it's precision. Yeah, okay.
Yes, so what you guys. Yes, you can you can chat.
Okay, okay. So should I say or should I?
Yeah, yeah, sure. You can just say it.
Yeah, okay. The main component of the whole sentence, it's the play like you have already said, the place and the people. And it's the main object, I guess, intense that. That actually describes the whole sentence in short. So not in short, but like the main component of the sentence.
Yeah, yes. Good job. Yes, good job. Is place, place, date, people. Those are the keyword, I think. Yes. So yes, good job is called the main concept of the sentence. Okay, so monitor social media feed. So it's similar to what I have said before. It take media feed, it analyze whether it's positive, negative. So that is the sentiment, right? Sentiment is where you see whether the customer upset or happy, you know, they analyze the customer complaint and then. They give the report on that, classify documents that have sensitive information. So whether they have personal information, you know, that I that required to be removed and they will sense. Say classified and reaction in it. So performance optimizing. So they group options of people into a group and then they give us back the report like this. So please go through it. I'm going through it briefly, but you should go in back to more. And try to get example so that you are ready for the test because one of the main component of the test in the Azure. Is that they will give you like case studies and questions that ask you in the real world scenario, what would you use? So that's why you need to come up with examples to be ready for the test. Okay. So so remember sentiment analysts, you you sent it. Genius. So sentiment analysts, okay, I need to. Need to minimize this sentiment analysis. You analyze the mood of the customer, whether they happy it is sad. Key phrase extraction to extract keyword language detection, you detect language that they use. For example, Chinese, English, you know, Japanese, name entity recognition. So what is name entity? Let's see. See sentiment analysis, you can see in here exactly the table will clean the chair will comfortable, stuff like that. Great experience and stuff. So sentiment is about happy or sad key phrase in service, great food, birthday, so. Keyword of the sentence entity recognition. So again, entity, date, place, name. So they recognize like person name, location, quantity, you know, data, email, IP address, stuff like that. So those are all entities. Okay, so there's some characteristic of the text. And as I said yesterday, there's so much more, but and I just put. Small things that highlight the character of this and I think it might have been the exam. So the limitation for the text analyst is 5,000 characters for each document. So if you need to analyze a large file that you need to break it into chunks. And there's free tier for text analysts and there's and after the free tier, the request return per second depends on the. Here that you have. See, so let's have a look on that because I did encounter questions that require knowledge in the free tier versus paid tier. So you see. The free tier come with web or container. So you have so many more on the service beside web or container. Remember. You can apply for Luis, you can apply it in many form, but in the free tier only come with weapon container form. And you limit to 5,000 transaction per month. So fight 5,000 API call and return. So after that. You have you start to get chat depend on the tier. You see S zero, S one, S two depends on the. Transaction per month and in each of these tier, you have the limitation. So you see in here maximum size of the document is 5,000 characters and the request in one megabyte. And you can see like besides, besides these documents, you have the feature with the. Request for example, language detection, you can max documents, max document per request is 1,000. So you can go through this array limits. So as for example, the lowest one is the S tier. You can start at 1,000 per second. The other one that I said is per month for the free tier and here is 1,000 per second. That mean like if you select this one, the most they can return per second in 1,000. So if your application request more than that, then consider to go to audit here. Is it all right? Is everyone all right with this? Okay, let's let's go to another important feature is format support. So as you know, this is text analyst. So this is the. So this is the unique code for the text analyst. So it's a pop UTF eight and UTF sixteen. And also when it encounter ambiguous, a mixed text content such that like the emoji of smiling like this. It will return unknown for language name, language identity and a score of indicating NA. So remember, we talked about a score of zero to one, which indicate like unlikely to most likely. So in case like this, it will return NA. So it's not, it's not a number. It's just not available. So we come to the quizzes. So let's try to do the quizzes here. Guys, are you make and chat working all right because we entered the quizzes. So we're hoping everyone will participate in it. Guys.
Second. Please are that you're.
Oh, yes, you can. You can also tell me the question, the answer in the chat. I'll see the chat and I'll answer you on there. Is is everyone all right? Should we start now?
Hey.
Okay, so let me get the timer out. As yesterday, let's try to limit our reading to 10 seconds so that we prepare for the exam. Oh, no, we miss. A Santa. Let me see if there's any trouble. Okay, there isn't any trouble. So it just you saga. Oh, Prasata is back. Awesome. We were waiting for you. So are you all right, Prasata? Should we start? Yes, your voice is still. Your voice is still breaking up, but let's start. I think I can see your message. Yes. So. Let's start with the first one. I didn't do this. So so we can do this together. In the Luis app, what is the purpose of the utterance? So what do you guys think that says? Do you can chat? The second, okay, good job. So let's start with the. Second one, what is the purpose of the non-intent? Okay. So what do you guys think the nun is? So remember, what is the intent? Ten is the intention. So what do you guys think of? The nun in ten is. So what do you guys guess on this? Prasasa Sega. Here you guys can chat to me. Okay, so the nun intent is, for my guess. It will be this random utterance don't match any intent. So let's see if it correct. Awesome. You guys still want to do more quizzes or should we go through the algorithm? Hello, hello. Saga. Okay, let's do one more piece, then we can go through algorithm. So you need provision as your resources to authorize new Luis application, what kind of resource you need to create. So remember, language understanding is the shortcut for Luis. You are authorizing Luis application to support international clock, you want to use to be able to ask current time. What time is London? What should you do? So remember. So to get time, I guess. Okay, hello, welcome back, Prasata.
Yeah, actually, there was, there was a problem in the network. I can't connect. But I I'm connected. Yeah, yeah, I can connect right.
Okay, awesome, awesome. So I'm just doing like quiz one and two. So. Can you can you go through and see and maybe we can try to please to treat and we can.
Okay.
A saga, if you. I know that you are mute, so you can chat on the chat box if you have. Okay, okay, sure. So let's start with a question three, public Louis application, what information does a client application? Okay, let's start it for 10 seconds. Okay, so Prasata, what do you think of question trees?
The first one.
Oh, this one.
Yeah, the production.
It's a second, right?
The first one.
First one, okay. Awesome. So. Seems like we are good with this model. So let's do one model in text analyst and now quickly talk to you guys about the algorithm G C. In the Azure. So let's start with the first one. So the first one is 10 second. So what do you think, Saga Prasata?
Key phase extraction, second one.
Okay, so let's try question number two.
The first one.
Good job. So the third one.
The first one.
The first one.
No, 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 no. I literally thought it's inside. Yeah.
Yes, good job. Awesome. So good job. It seems like we are good with this model. So I'll move to the. Azure machine learning algorithm. So you know, as all the students feedback from the test, they will heavily test on the Azure machine learning algorithm. So what are the, well, there's no specific specific Azure machine learning algorithm, but just machine learning algorithm in general. Sorry, I should. So basically, we can break it into categorized. So supervised learning and unsupervised learning. So supervised learning is regression and classification, unsupervised learning is clustering. So remember supervised learning, you own, you need to come, your data need to come with label. So that it can supervise and it can learn from the information and supervise it that you don't meet a label over that. So. This is a very variable resource where you can. It will guide you to definitely this could be test on the exam. So you need to. So you need to pay attention for this carefully. So in here you can download the G C. So you see, so they break down into a different feature of example, text analysis, which is the one that we just studied. So we just learned a few minutes ago. So what, what is the case that you want to do derive high quality information from text? So depends on the, depends on the feature, then you have the algorithm that you want to select. And majority, I would say this much, majority, majority of these surveys in that perform in cognitive service. Remember what cognitive services? Yeah, cognitive service, Louis Q and A, Azure boss service, it easy to use. So the user is a normal developer, so they won't have the expertise in knowing about the algorithm. Most of the services that you will encounter with the algorithm could be medium difficult to meet expert to development. So pay attention to that in the text. So if they want to analyze on algorithm, likely their service could be in this group. Don't select this group. Is it? So let me go back in there. So that is one team. And when, when your scenario questions encounter with algorithm and things that you have to analyze, remember the keyword is machine learning. Machine learning is a service in the Microsoft Azure. It called machine learning service. As I mentioned yesterday. They present, is presented by this logo. And with machine learning service, you have to go through the entire process. So joining package, validate, deploy and monitor. So let's go. So basically, remember this, remember the scenario. First, you want, what do you want to do with your file? For example, anatomy detect and they will, they will have like feature. If you have like 100 feature under and you use one class and fast training time that you use PC. So basically it will give you like what is the pro and cons for you to detect and to use. So study this shit very well. So another part is how to select algorithm. So you know, first you want to, you have to question yourself, what do you want with the data? So after you know what you want to do with the data, you go to algorithm G C. And after that, you add additional requirement like currency, training time, linear number, number parameter, number of features. So in your questions, remember this, remember this, study this very, very well. This one I cannot help you because it take really time. And so we have we have, when is your exam side up, Bracata? Next week, oh, Saga next week. Okay. So basically we go through, we went through computer vision, natural language processing. So these are the main these are the main items. So the next week, if you have the test, I think you should spend some time in reading this. Reading the G C and reading this because for sure it will have this. So spend two or three days reading this, this stuff because it will be heavily weight on the test. The Azure machine learning studio, basically it's just a drag and drop. And you just need to remember resource provisioning. So like, you know, when you use, when you use which resource and when you and when you delete the resource and stuff like that. But this will be very, very important in the test. So study it well. And I think thirty days and also one component that we didn't have time to go through today is the speech. So conversation AI, stuff like that, I think. I, yes, so Anne is my, Anne is also another girl who helped me present. So she gonna present this next week and but I don't, I don't know if it will be for after your test. So you know, in case if your test before that, then you can come. You can take a look at these slides that you have you with the understanding before. So let me just quickly come through this so that you know what you were. So basically, another model within cover is conversation AI. So we have Q and A maker and Azure boss service. And for speech recognize cognitive service in the Azure, we have speech S D A five. Those are like framework product service that you could integrate and call API to have to integrate your apps with the service of speech recognition. If you come next week, there will be more details. So I just go to things that I know about, about this. So basically there's speech to test and text to speech are those main feature. And conversation AI and let me see Q and A maker. Those are text analysis. So basically text on that. Sorry, just later, just later, they have feature is text to speech, text to text and speech to speech. Are you all right? So just later, you, they can translate your text into speech and your speech into text and speech into speech. So you know, one one, the one text and then you just lay it in another language in, in form of text or speech. That basically is Q and A maker. So you create a conversation box to answer your questions based on, based on the information it fit to it. So those are conversation AI and cognitive service for that part. So I think we cover majority of the tests already. Next week we will cover more in Azure, Azure machine learning studio and Azure machine learning interface. And we will try to do more about the quizzes in in the algorithm. So if your test next week, I would recommend you to after you study this is to G C well, then you can, you can check for some quizzes online for classification and regression to make sure that you know how to apply it in each scenarios. The quiz I put here is from Udemy, but then I don't know if you have the so if you don't, then I guess I'll try, I'll try to post it. I'll try to put it in my blog for everyone to see. Some example of classification and regression. So let's hope that I can finish that after the, well, before your test. So I guess that is today meeting. So see you guys next week. And good luck to, to the test saga. Oh, shared dumps of practice question. Yes. It's actually on my blog already. So there's two issues that I'll share with you. So originally I planned to purchase, well, I planned to get this course, but then it's not included in my Udemy, Udemy plan. So if I, if I want to get this practice test, I have to buy separately and it's quite high price. So that's why I didn't get it. But there are already example question test. In here you can see, you can see like I, I have read. I had been studying for this certificate for a while and when I study, I get the questions. I try to make questions so that I can remember. So you can also go through this to see the question that I collect. And also collected from other dumps, yeah, other dumps for like similar test. So you can see. So you can see it here, I compared a different test to this test. So in, in the areas that it overlap, I tried to select them that relevant information to the AI nine hundred. So that way I have the questions for my that's why I have this question for the patent and I'll try to put more for classification and request. So basically the, oh, actually I have some already. Okay, I'll put more. So basically my questions has a lot of content on the machine learning computers. Vision, especially there's a lot of computer vision. I didn't, I didn't put much on N L P and conversation AI because there not much material on it. So I'll look into it. Mission and regression, there's plenty on the internet already. So after I finish with the attitude and I'll look into this. Okay, so that is my priority and hopefully it will be before your test saga. And I'm looking forward to hear your sharing with us. Okay, so thank you so much, guys, and good luck with the test and see you guys next week. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
I thank you.